I want to welcome you to the 14th Annual National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day Town Hall Meeting, sponsored by the Faith Community Partnership. National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day was first observed in 1999 as an opportunity to galvanize the entire country to stop and reflect on the impact of HIV on the African-American black community. This year's theme is "I Am My Brother's and My Sister's Keeper: Fight HIV/AIDS." Standing here with me today is Joyce Bunkley, an executive committee member of the Faith Community Partnership. We have worked together over the past 14 years using our faith to fight HIV, and we feel very blessed to host this event again for you today. Thank you, Joyce. We also are honored to have a few people here that I wanted just to recognize. Reverend Tamika Cobb, she is the new executive director of the Beautiful Gate Outreach Center. We have from the Division of Public Health, Mr. Robert Watson, Ray Collins, and Bob Vila, as well as one of our featured speakers. And of course, you for being here, our special guests. National Black HIV/AIDS Awareness Day has a focus area of four topics: Get Educated, Get Tested, Get Involved, and Get Treated. Our goal today is that you leave educated, encouraged to get tested, and to communicate the message of the importance of testing with others in your circle, to get involved in the fight against HIV and AIDS, and to understand and share the importance of treatment for those living with HIV and AIDS. Our first presenter and our friend is Dr. Martin Luda. Dr. Luda is the chief of the Bureau of Communicable Diseases with the Delaware Division of Public Health. In his capacity, Dr. Luda assures a consistent approach to the prevention, treatment, and control of communicable diseases throughout the state of Delaware by coordinating activities between Public Health, stakeholders in the community, and our healthcare system. The Bureau of Communicable Diseases oversees the following programs: HIV Prevention, Treatment, and Surveillance; STD Prevention; TB Elimination; the Immunization Program; and our Hepatitis Prevention Program as well. Martin earned his M.D. at the University of Nairobi in Kenya and trained in pediatric nephrology at the United Medical and Dental Schools of Guy's and St. Thomas Hospital in London. Prior to transitioning to Public Health in 2001, Dr. Luda was in clinical pediatric practice and was also a faculty member at the University of Nairobi Medical School. Please welcome Dr. Luda.
Your presence here today actually shows your continued interest in the field of HIV. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Before I proceed, I would like to get a sense of the audience. How many advocates do we have in the audience today? It's pretty good. How many clinicians? Okay. How many interested parties? I guess that should be everybody. All right. HIV has been with us now for over 30 years. To get a sense of how much interest we still have in HIV, how many of you are aware of Ebola as a disease? Everybody, right? How many of you have heard of measles in the news recently? Virtually everybody. How many have heard of HIV/AIDS in the news all late? Probably none. Now, this doesn't show that the disease has gone away. It just shows that our focus has shifted, but we still have a problem, and really that's the focus of the talk today. Before I proceed, I would like to thank the Faith Community Partnership Against HIV/AIDS and Nurse Beeman for inviting me to speak. "I Am My Brother's and My Sister's Keeper: Fight HIV/AIDS." That's a very powerful message. We are all brothers and sisters in the fight to eradicate a disease that waged war in our community for three decades and over. Now, back in 1987, President Ronald Reagan declared AIDS a public health enemy number one. Almost 30 years later, that statement still holds true for many. At the height of the epidemic in the mid-1980s, the number of new infections per year in the U.S. was 130,000. That has been drastically reduced by more than two-thirds to about 50,000 today. However, among racial and ethnic groups, African-Americans bear the greatest burden of HIV in the nation. While comprising 14% of the U.S. population, African-Americans account for almost half of the new infections and roughly 41% of people living with HIV. The battle against HIV is far from over, and I believe more than ever that if we are going to continue to make progress, we need to look to ourselves. As I've just pointed out, we are not in the news anymore. The Division of Public Health remains committed to use all available resources to assist the community, but we really have to. We really need your help. We really need your help in all this. Let's take a quick reality check on where we are today, what we have achieved so far, and what we need to do if we are to continue to reduce HIV in our communities. Currently, there are 3,500 people living with HIV in Delaware. 61% are African-American. 21% of the state's population is black, but 65% of our HIV/AIDS are African-American. 64% of all cases are due to unprotected sex. 32% of all cases are due to needle-sharing behavior, but I'm happy to report that this proportion is rapidly diminishing partly due to the effectiveness of the needle exchange program that was instituted about 2007, I believe. So we do have some successes. So, some successes. It's not all doom and gloom. Community and Public Health-based prevention and treatment programs are doing an outstanding job, and new infections are down by 10%. Sorry, by 61% in 10 years. By 61% in 10 years. A comprehensive system of enhanced care available to expecting mothers with HIV in Delaware has assured that no cases of HIV have been passed from mother to child in the past 60 years. I think that's very good news. Now, since inception in 2007, our needle exchange program has served 2,300 clients, safely disposed of 320,000 potentially contaminated needles, and enrolled 400 clients into treatment programs. This again is, I think, is very good progress. Delaware maintains a HIV prevention service network that provides rapid testing within 20 minutes of virtually everybody in Delaware who needs to be tested. So if you are not being tested, it's not because you have no access. Now, let's take a moment to appreciate all that. There's a lot of good news here and a lot of really good work by those of you in the room. I think for everybody, we deserve a bit of an applause right here. If there's nobody part of us in the back, let's do it ourselves. Okay. A lot of work still lies ahead. Yes, we have made progress, and we should be applauded for this. However, the data I have shared so far indicates clearly that even if we were to interrupt all transmission of new infections in Delaware today, we would still have a lot of infected people in our communities, right? They're not going anywhere soon. And guess what? This is the source of infections in our communities, but there's something we can do about it. Now, most of these people with HIV know their status, but some do not. And this is why I bring this up. This pool of infected individuals is part of our community. They are not going anywhere, but we can minimize the risk of transmission of infection from those who are infected to those who are not infected, okay? Through the following actions: Those that do not know that their HIV status should get tested as soon as possible. Those that test negative for HIV should do everything in their power to maintain their negative status. I don't believe anybody out there at this day and age doesn't know anything about HIV prevention or prevention of transmission of STD, of sexually transmitted diseases, because basically it is the same thing. Now, those that test positive for HIV already or already know that they are infected should seek treatment, and we are going to revisit this treatment issue later on. CDC estimates that 14% of those with HIV do not know that they are infected, and they account for about 50% of new infections. So those who are not infected, sorry, those who don't know their status and are infected may be part of the problem. And that's where treatment comes in. We're going to talk very briefly about treatment as prevention. Treatment as prevention is utilized as part of a test and treat strategy. It refers to HIV prevention methods that use antiretroviral treatment to decrease the risk of HIV transmission. When you are treated, you can reduce your viral load within your body to very low or undetectable levels. Once that happens, your chances of transmitting infection from one person to the next are markedly reduced. By increasing testing and treatment coverage, we can decrease community viral load overall. So we will continue to have a huge burden of infected individuals in our community, but what we can do is reduce the viral load within that group and therefore reduce the transmission within our community. Really, that's really the most important thing we can do at this point. However, this strategy can only work if we treat and test and prevent. So you treat, test, and prevent. I would like to take you back to this slide here, which really shows what we call a continuum of care in HIV treatment. There are some folks that are not in care and do not know their status. We want to move everybody who is infected to fully know their status and to be fully engaged in care. And fully engaged in care doesn't mean only taking the occasional treatment. It means you take your treatment, you get your viral load checked, and you ensure that it is reduced and maintained at an undetectable level as long as you are on treatment, and that's the only way we can stop the transmission from those who are infected to those who I'm sorry, I keep moving up and down. Another area I would like to address is stigma. Stigma for HIV remains a powerful influence in our community. It is a natural tendency to distance oneself from something that can be used to stigmatize an entire community, but this fight cannot be won from a distance by denying the reality of HIV in our communities. We have to accept the reality of HIV in our communities. We have to accept the reality of the differences in sexual orientation within our communities, and we have to embrace these differences, and that's the only way we can move forward. This fight cannot be won by participating or allowing the stigmatization of those that are infected with HIV, people of different sexual orientation, or those suffering from addiction. It is impossible to address what you will not allow yourself to see. Okay. Now, these are some of the effects that stigma has on us. At the individual level, it keeps people from experiencing a problem, it keeps people who are experiencing a problem from acknowledging the problem and seeking help. At the family or community and societal level, it keeps people from recommending help or acknowledging problems for our families and friends. And if the family and the individual and the community cannot accept a problem, there can be no policy developed to address a problem that doesn't exist because nobody's facing Now, we should not allow stigma to exist in any of us and in any of our communities. One thing that we have is the power of choice. We can choose to use condoms to protect one another from HIV. We can choose not to discriminate members of our community because they are gay or they have HIV. We can choose to use the free HIV screening programs and free community-based treatment centers within our community. Oops. Oh, God.
That's $50, Dr. Luda.
Oh.
Want you to know.
Just send the bill to Jim. He'll pay. Sorry about that. Where was I? I think we were talking about... Right, okay. So, we can choose not to discriminate against members of our community because they have HIV or because they are gay or because they have addictions. And we can choose to use the free testing and treatment facilities within our communities. We can also choose not to use excuses from our friends, our sexual partners, that protecting one another or getting tested is inconvenient. And we can choose not, we can choose to challenge the conspiracy nonsense that sometimes circulates around HIV and gets in the way of prevention. We can choose to do the right thing. Now, over the years, DPH spends nearly $2.5 million per year, and still our community continues to have the highest rate of new infections year after year. As we, we all know that government funding is drying up, and very soon we'll have less than 1 million in prevention funds for the entire state. To put this in perspective, that's about $1 in prevention dollars for each Delawarean for a year in prevention, and that, of course, can't do much, so we have to do something for ourselves. With free rapid HIV screening available throughout Delaware and at many locations within the city of Wilmington, there simply is no reason to not know your HIV status. If each one of us made it a priority to get tested, a free 10-minute test at an HIV testing site or at your next doctor's visit, and by the way, Delaware now has an opt-out law, which means that your doctor will test you unless you say you do not want to be tested, we could eliminate up to 86 new cases of HIV among the black community. With even more reductions every year after that, because every time we reduce the new infections, the following year there'll be fewer people to infect others and so on and so forth. So get tested. Ask your friends to get tested whether or not they think they're at risk, because most of us don't get tested because we think we are not at risk. Do the right thing and get tested. Currently, there are 2,000, just over 2,000 black Delawareans living with HIV/AIDS, and my statisticians, Jim Darling, who's right here, says that about 405 of these don't know, sorry, may not be on treatment. So they know their status, but they are not on treatment. What does that mean? It means that the viral load is not suppressed. It means that they are highly infected. It means that they may be spreading the infection. On treatment, proper treatment reduces your chances of spreading HIV by about 95%, so it is very, very effective. If you have HIV or know of someone that does and are not getting treatment, please call us at Public Health, and we will help you get treatment. There's no waiting list for medication, assistance, or treatment in Delaware. Treatment is covered for most by Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security waiver, and the Ryan White program. For many clients, it is free, so there's really no reason why anybody should not be on treatment, especially if you know your status. We must make it a priority to take the time to make sure that those with HIV in our communities are getting into treatment. I can't emphasize that enough. Knowing that you are infected is one thing. Getting into treatment is another thing. Maintaining that treatment at the appropriate level is another thing. So these are three things that we must make sure happen. It's not only good for the patient. It might be the only way we can stop the spread of this disease within our community, because like I say, we have a very huge burden, a disproportionate burden of infection within our community. The good thing about the treatments that we have available right now is that people can live longer, healthier lives, but that means also that we have more people with HIV among us. If they are not getting appropriate treatment and sustaining their viral loads under suppression, it creates an ongoing problem which we will never be able to surmount. We should be able to say 30 years of HIV is enough. Yes, we must applaud the progress so far. It is worthy of celebration: fewer cases, better treatment, and longer healthier lives for those with HIV. And if we are going to save ourselves and the 89 of us that might get infected in 2015, and bear in mind 89 new infections, that could be somebody you know, that could be yourself, and we can prevent that 89 new infections by making sure that those who are infected are on treatment and are on appropriate treatment. We must go to our communities and start doing what we know we should be doing. Those who are not tested, get tested. Those who are on treatment, maintain their treatment. Those not on treatment, get into treatment. We have come this far, often in fear. It's time to go further, this time with courage and conviction. Get tested, get treatment, get tested. If you are positive, get treatment. It is not too much to ask, I think. You can go to hivtest.org to find the closest free HIV screening site, or if you have insurance, ask your doctor. If you don't know who to speak to, you can call Public Health, and we will help guide you along. Do this for yourself. Do it for your family. Do it for all of us. I wasn't aware of the makeup of the audience, so I tried to give a talk that covers most areas without going into too much depth in any one field. This is your time to ask any questions if you need some clarification. Yes?
Just excuse me. Everybody needs to hear your question, so stand up. Don't grab my microphone.
Okay. When you say "treatment as prevention," could you clarify that? Are you talking about using things like antivirals and produce inhibitors before a person is infected?
No.
And what's the target group?
I'm glad you asked that. That's a very good question. There are two issues here. Treatment as prevention refers to making sure that those who are already infected get the appropriate treatment to reduce their viral loads to an undetectable level so that they cannot transmit, even if they do engage, hopefully they don't, but if they do engage in unprotected sex and so on and so forth. The other issue that you are referring to is prophylaxis, where we give medication to those who are not infected, prevent them from getting infected, and that's a different
I actually have two questions. One of them is if you could address the opt-out law? When you were saying that if you're, I guess, being sent for, I guess, blood work or whatever, what are the situations under which a physician would, that would come up? Would you be made aware that you had the option to opt out, or if you don't already know to bring it forward?
Oh.
Then you're just, you know, going to be tested. And the second question is regarding, I guess, the costs. You had mentioned a couple of programs where it seems like it might be affordable, but as a person who holds private insurance, I would think that it would be pretty expensive. So if you're not in a position where you're covered by, you know, something that's going to be free, you know, I just don't see it being something that somebody can afford if they hold private insurance.
Okay. Those are very good questions. Let me start by addressing the opt-out law. This law was passed about two years ago now, I think, and we have, we've become aware that most clinicians are not even very aware of how it operates, but this is how it's supposed to work. In a clinical setting, HIV testing now falls under the regular kind of test that we do in your doctor's office, like lipid test or glucose test or whatever. However, the doctor will inform you that it's going to be done. He won't do it just, I mean, without letting you know. He'll let you know that he's going to do it, and then you have the option of opting out. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be blindsided by a report. You'll know that it's been done, and you'll have a chance to opt out. Does that answer the question? Okay. Now, the second question about the cost. There are very many programs here that provide free services for HIV testing and treatment. It ranges all the way from those who are not insured will have everything for free, of course. Those who are insured, depending on your level of coverage, you may have your copay covered, or you may have your medications covered. All this is worked out into a formula that looks at your income level and your poverty level and all that, so that at no time is income or cost ever going to be a barrier for HIV treatment in Delaware. If you have a question about costs, you think it's too high, you can call the Public Health, and they can walk you through available resources, but most times you find that because we are very good screening surveillance process, you will already be in our system, and we will be able to help you out very easily if you're a HIV-positive individual. Does that answer your question? You don't seem to be. Basically, this is a situation. If you have insurance and the copay is high because of the medication, or the cost of the medication is high, the Ryan White program will be able to help you out in that area. If you are completely indigent and your income does not cover anything at all, you will completely have a free service in terms of testing and treatment and engagement and retention in care. One more question.
Would you think at any point in time that we'll have HIV testing on the list of cholesterol, high blood pressure, all those things that we get tested for when we go see our doctors? You think that HIV will be on that list eventually?
It is, actually. Technically, it is, and that's where the opt-out law comes in. It is on the list. However, unlike cholesterol or your blood sugar, the doctor will let you know that they're going to do it, and then you'll have the option of saying, "I don't want it to be done," or "It's okay." So right, as we speak right now, if you So right, as we speak right now, if you go to a clinical setting, that means a doctor's office or suchlike, it's already on the list of regular... Does that answer your question? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Wait, one comment back here. He can't speak.
Hi. I just want to address her opt-out testing. When you go into your doctor's office, you have an opportunity to sit down and talk with him. And from that interview, he's going to make that decision to offer you the opt-out test because within your conversation, you have discussed some risk factors that you may have put yourself at risk. So as a good interviewer and as a good listener, he is, he has that opportunity, and it's his right to offer you that opt-out testing.
Thank you, IC Councilwoman Dr. Hanifa Shabazz. Thank you for coming. Good to see you. Today, we also have the opportunity to learn more about HIV. Education is our greatest defense in this fight against HIV and AIDS. Helping us to understand HIV treatment is Dr. Carlton Rodney Cooper. Dr. Cooper has an extensive background in HIV and prostate cancer, and currently serves as the Assistant Professor of Biological Sciences and American, Black American Studies at the University of Delaware. Please welcome Dr. Cooper.
Okay, hello, can you hear me? Okay, great, great. First, let me thank Renee and the faith community for inviting me here. I'm a little nervous, because this is sort of out of my comfort zone where I'm giving lectures or giving scientific talk. But this is actually a good experience for me, as well as for you, so that you can help me, we can learn from each other. Well, one of the things that I'm interested in doing, first, let me give you a little bit of history about myself. I'm a graduate from Morehouse College, and I started my research career off there as an undergraduate research assistant. And then I went from there to Clark Atlanta University, and then Mississippi State, where I started my career as a virologist with a modern biochemistry, looking at the evolution of AIDS virus in cows called bovine immunodeficiency virus. From there, I came up, I had to make a decision. What do I want to do with my life as a research biomedical researcher? And that's a personal, I'm not an M.D. or a Dr. Loder, I'm a Ph.D., but I study human cells and viruses to try to understand how they function, and how drugs function when they are exposed. So I had two choices, either HIV or prostate cancer. And I learned about this thing called racial health disparity, which I'll describe later. So I decided to focus on prostate cancer, even though I had an offer to go to Whistler Institute to study HIV. There, I decided to go to University of Michigan to study prostate cancer, and I'll explain why later. So in this talk, what I want to try to do is, in a very simple fashion, explain some scientific concept, using HIV treatment as a model. A lot of time in science, we are used to talking to our own peers. And I'm a professor, and I train a lot of pre-medico, pre-nursing, pre-vet, pre-dent students, so I tend to talk technical to them as well. But I'm also involved in lay education, thanks to Suzanne Tate and Renee Bean. Now, so let's start off with a basic information. In order to treat a virus, we have to know the difference between a virus and a bacteria. And there's a lot of misinformation going on about antibiotics. "Oh, Lord, I got a cold, I need some antibiotics." Well, that's probably my fault, and people like me. If you, I don't have a pointer, so if you look at the top picture, okay, with that little hair weave thing there in the tail, that is a bacteria. That is different from a virus. And we have two types. We have the one that has the coat on it, we call it an envelope, and we have the naked virus. The cold virus is a naked virus. HIV looks like that figure B there. It looks exactly like that. Okay? Now, when we talk about treatment, so antibiotics are for bacteria only. Penicillin targets bacteria external structure, so that little layer of thing you see up there, not the little spikes, but the coat around the bacteria, that's called the cell wall. Penicillin prevents the bacteria from making that, and then it dies. Tetricycline targets stuff inside the bacteria, and you see several things in there, okay? It targets that. Those things are not in viruses, so it's not going to work. So hopefully you understand that. So let's learn about treating viruses using HIV. Now, before you panic, let's look at, this here is for scientists and medical professionals, and this is a slide I use in my microclass, and one of my students is right here. To be brief, what you see there, for most of you, you probably see chaos. For Dr. Loder, and maybe Renee and Suzanne, they, okay, not Suzanne. Okay, well, maybe my student, Ryan. Yeah, okay, they probably understand this fig, and they probably can get up here and give this lecture as easy as I can. But one thing I learned from working with Renee and Suzanne is that you can't tell the general public everything, and they don't need to know everything about this, because I'm the one doing research, they're the one doing the counseling, so they should know it. So with help from Ryan here, I came up with this other model. So if you look at the ledger, we have viral ingredients. So we have reverse transcriptase, I call it the recipe duplicator, because the virus has a recipe. The recipe is actually what you refer to as the gene. It's in my family, okay? It's in my gene, all right? Well, the gene is that little line, oh, wait a minute, can I do this? Oh, yeah. Should have told me. Right there, all right? And then here is the genome, which contains all the genes that make up who you are, make up the virus. The protease is the knife, and the fusion is the blender. So it's like we are making a virus. So we got this right, the virus will fuse here, you see that? It fuses and releases the gene, it makes a copy with the duplicator. It goes into the brain of the cell and makes this meaty protein, okay? And this protein, you can't just use that as it is, it has to be cut up. So it brings in the knife. Ta-da! There it is. And then it begins to mix things up and put it all together, and now the virus is almost complete, but it's not a virus yet, and then boom, there it is, and shoo, out it goes. So you went from one to four, it's actually more than that, okay? So that's the replication cycle in a nutshell. So let's expose this to treatment. So I refer to the fusion inhibitor, FI, the reverse transcriptase inhibitor, RTI, and the protease. So when you think of the fusion, think of stopping the blender, you're not blending anymore. When you think of the recipe, you're not writing it down anymore. You know, we pass recipe down in our family from our great-great-great-grandmother all the way to our Aunt Ruth and so forth. All right, and then we talk about the knife, well, we just got a dull knife. So let's look at this again. So with the fusion, we prevent the virus from attaching. Now, if a person is already exposed, this prevents the virus from replicating and infecting other cells, okay? This one prevents the virus from copying, follow the red right here. It prevents the virus from, I lost it there, from copying, okay? So now it can't duplicate the recipe. If it can't do that, it can't take the recipe into the brain of the cell, where it mixes up with your gene, and then, oops, almost did it, mixes with your gene, and that's how it's replicated. Then we get the, did I miss something? Okay, we dull the knife, so the virus can't cut up and make those pieces so that it can go here, there we are. And then eventually, we like, so we prevent it at three steps. We prevent the fusion with fusion inhibitor, the duplication with the reverse transcriptase inhibitor, and the protease inhibitor targets the knife. So the way to think of this is fusion blocker, recipe eliminator, and knife duller. Does that help? And this is what makes up the highly active anti-retroviral treatment called HART. Now, another thing that's miscommunicated, and we hear all of this now with the measles vaccine, and vaccine causes autism, and vaccine have all these complications. First of all, all medicine has some side effects. Tylenol, for example, is poison to the liver. I take Adderall, I hope you can tell, and it's a toxin, okay? So all drugs have side effects. We know about chemotherapy. Well, HART is no different. What I'm not saying is that you should not, you should take your medicine, but I want you to be aware that they do have side effects. So here are a few of them that are very common. Domino-obesity, and unfortunately, I'm kind of mulling that a little bit, but we can work on that, praise the Lord, okay? I'm working on it. If you recall, 30 years ago, how did an AIDS patient look 30 years ago? You recall that? Skinny, you weren't bone, okay? Di, yeah. Ah, Dr. Loder, you, you did it to me too, huh? All right. Diabetes, okay, is another one, and high cholesterol. So one of the questions I ask as a scientist, does racial health disparity complicate HIV treatment in African-Americans? Dr. Loder has already told you that we have the highest incidence of this disease. So let me define racial disparity for you. It's a collection of diseases in a particular ethnic group, or age group, or gender, or sexual orientation. So since we're focusing on African-American, and it can also be by religion. Unfortunately, if you look in the, look at the web, and look at some of these incredible websites, obesity is more common in the Christian community. Jesus is the fixer, won't he? He'll fix some fried chicken for you. But we're not ready to get on the cross yet, so we need to work on that. HIV, as you know, is a racial health disparity. Prostate cancer is, black men have the highest incidence, meaning they get it more, and the highest mortality, for me, they die more from prostate cancer. Breast cancer, interesting, black women get it less, die more. Get it less, die more. I see my sister on a mission, Chevelle, over there, okay? Obesity, again, high in our group, and as I told you, it's high in Christian, and then diabetes. So two of these are common in HIV treatment. So hypertension is another one. So one of the things I want to focus on is obesity in the church, in the area where Renee and Suzanne Beautiful Gate run a lot of testing. I started this off with, this is Dr. Jackie Aldrich, I can't reach it, here it is. Dr. Dave Usher, and here I am 10 years ago when I was lean and mean. And we did this obesity workshop for the high school students in Delaware, Del Tech. And we were featured in Diverse Education because of the impact it had on those students, because they didn't even, some of the students didn't even know that they were obese, and they didn't know the impact of obesity. So from there, just give you a little bit of statistics, and then we'll go right into the health shop. So what are the consequences of obesity? It's epidemic, it's highest in the African-American community, it follows diabetes type 2, or they say, or diet, you know, or they say, as we say, sugar or sugar. It follows that. The cost of obesity, a lot of times people will say things like, "Well, whose problem is it?" It's all of us, because we all pay into healthcare in some form or fashion. And if you notice, the healthcare for an obese patient is $1,500 more than for a normal patient. And interestingly, last, yesterday on NPR, I was just driving in my car, and they were talking about all the nurses that are getting injured for picking up heavy patients that weigh in surplus of 350 to 450 pounds. And one leg on a patient like that can weigh 100 pounds. I did not know that. So a lot of these nurses are experiencing injury. Well, and the information is right there, the website. So I was appointed by my beloved pastor, Dr. Reverend Sylvester Beaman, to be the coordinator of the Body and Soul Health Ministry, something that I didn't really want to do, because I didn't think I was qualified. So he assigned me a mentor in the form of Renee Bean. And Renee needed help, so then comes Suzanne. And I tell you, it's been like a boot camp experience for me. Sorry, Suzanne. So here's the Body and Soul group here, and in collaboration with the University of Delaware, oh, we got funding from them and other sources, we had a major healthcare, health fair. And the purpose of that was, and here's some pictures, I won't go into all of that, there go, oh, Katrina, there you are, okay? And then some of the nurses from Delaware trained, there go Ms. Bean's daughter, Beautiful Gate, and that's me and Minnie Cooper right there, okay? And you can see how excited Renee is here, along with Dean Matt, and here's some more pictures. So the purpose of this was to get, assess the overall health of the congregation, and to provide this data to them, and also to help the university engage better with this congregation. So Dean Matt funded a good part of this, along with some funds that Renee recruited. So let's see what the data says. So here's the data. Age, BMI, body mass index, systolic blood pressure, diastolic blood pressure, glucose, cholesterol, and the good cholesterol, right here, HDL. So if you see, if you look at it by age, the BMI is a little high, not age, sorry. The BMI is a little high, the systolic is high, but not significant, and this here is high too. But the major indicators we see here is right here. And there were a lot of people there that were prediabetic. Cholesterol is kind of interesting, so this is a normal value here, and it, but it's high, sorry, it's low, although it has a great deal of variation, but look, like we have a good bit of cholesterol, so I guess we're not doing that bad, because that's the good cholesterol right there. So let's break it up by gender, and this was, again, approximately 130, 132 church attendees that came to this fair. Eighty of them agreed to be contacted by researchers like myself to participate in clinical trials, where African-Americans are always underrepresented, including trials for HIV and AIDS. That's very important to mention. So we look at it by age, so body mass index, we get this one, there you go. Pretty much the same here, again, female a little high, but that's not significant. But when we get here, we see that it's male. Boom. Yeah, it's the males in the church that are taking up the blood sugar. Females, you have a great deal of variation, though, but it's the male. And now, what's interesting to me, and I, we don't have an explanation for this, cholesterol for females is high, low for males, but usually sugar and cholesterol kind of go together. Dr. Loder, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, if you look here at the good cholesterol, where's my arrow? There it is. It's high for the females because they have the good cholesterol, okay? So that's good, I'm thinking. Now, let's connect this with HIV therapy. So anti-retroviral drugs induce central obesity. Oops, I did this, this is not my computer. All right. Obesity complicates health in HIV-positive patients. Diabetes is a major complication. Protease inhibitors increase the risk of diabetes and exacerbate existing diabetes. I also want to add, it does the same for high cholesterol, even though I didn't put that on there. So the question I asked earlier, does racial health disparity complicate HIV treatment in African-Americans? And the obvious answer to that, based on this, but that was just one study, that was just a study that we did together, but based on a study with other scientists such as those at Johns Hopkins, the answer is absolutely yes. So the take-home message from this, and I hope you understand it, is that being healthy overall impacts your response to HIV medication. Being healthy overall impacts your response to HIV medication. Now, the last point I want to make here is, during my tenure with Beautiful Gate and being the Body and Soul Wellness Coordinator, I realized what I've learned as a scientist, it's something I would never have learned in a classroom. And I'm about to wrap this up, because I see I'm getting looked. So number one is improved communication, and I needed a lot of help in that area. And I'm not talking about talking science, I'm talking about taking the scientific information and conveying it to a fashion that all of you can understand as the general public. We all have expertise. Don't ask me to paint your house, I can't paint. I can make a virus, well, take that back, I can, well, modify a virus, okay? But I can't paint your house. I can barely cut your grass, okay? That's not my gift area. So improved communications to help people like myself be able to translate this information in a way that you can use it. Improved health and science literacy, it's well-known that in the African-American, as well as the Latino community, that science and health literacy is low compared to Asian and Caucasian. Well, that could be my fault. I come here and I talk about mitochondria, and angioplasty, and angiogenesis, and metastasis, and you're like, "I'm speaking in tongues." But if I say it in a different fashion, you can follow me, okay? So a good example of that is being able to explain things in a way that people can understand. And I hope you can recall the slides on antibiotics and antivirals. Shared resource. The community health event we had was a collaboration with the church, the University of Delaware, and the Center for Transit to Cancer Research. And that would have never happened if we didn't pool the resources. The scientists benefit because they got people participating in clinical trials and data. The community benefit because now they have access to the health information. And I still have that data. That data is locked up, but it's available to the congregation at any time. Lastly, improved grant writing. My first endeavor in this, writing a community grant, Renee and I got a small computer grant two years ago, didn't happen, but I, Renee, along with Sister on a Mission, sent their church, wrote a $1.7 million grant that was on the funding line. line. What that mean was, depending on how Congress voted about the funding for NIH, the grant could have gotten funded. NIH called me and told me, Congress went into sequester, so I didn't get it. But, they want me to resubmit as soon as the announcement come out again. So, improved grant writing. Lastly, I would like to thank the following people, my undergraduate researcher and student here, Ryan Merritt, he did all the animation. Of course, uh, Nurse Renee Beaman, uh, wasn't for her, I would not be here, you wouldn't even know who I am. Uh, Dean Matt for providing funds and always being very supportive, and looking at recruiting me to her department as well, so you can add another department to that. Uh, my former chair, Randy Duncan, who actually, um, and this is, I told Renee and Suzanne this, he allotted extra time for my service, so that I could be documented and compensated for community service by the university, not by Beautiful Gate. So, that was nice of him to do that. Dr. Robert Seitz, the former ch- uh, director of the TTCR, uh, also supported Randy in that. And, my sister from UD, she's UD alum, and every time I, I talk to her about this communication problem, and the, all the challenges I face in doing community outreach, she's always there, give me a hand or slap. Suzanne, take it. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I didn't take any questions, all their questions. Oh, outstanding. Oh, I'm happy.
Are there more churches getting involved?
Oh, absolutely. Uh, Suzanne or Renee probably can answer that better than I do, but we go to several churches a lot of times too, because I'm also a volunteer there too. And, we go to several church, uh, venues to present information on HIV and to let them know about our services.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that insightful and exciting information. Appreciate that, Rodney. Sharing her story is what Anna has been doing for many years, and she tells her story very well. Anna E. Folks is an HIV AIDS prevention advocate, activist, and spokesperson promoting HIV education, awareness, testing, and safer sex practices for all sexually active persons, regardless of age. She is a native of Baltimore, Maryland, and provides buddy support for those newly infected with HIV, especially those who are older. Anna creatively reaches out to educate and promote HIV testing, as well as safe and healthy living tips. She is truly my friend and sister, and is backed by popular demand. Please welcome Anna Folks.
Thank you. It is indeed a pleasure to be back here again. My family is from Delaware, so I love coming up here. Uh, sometimes I get to see family, sometimes I don't, but you're all my family. Uh, as Renee said, I am a native Baltimorean. I just had a birthday in January, so I'm now sixty-eight years old. I was diagnosed HIV positive at the age of fifty-nine. At that time, I became acutely aware that, um, I didn't follow the advice I gave my son, and I had unprotected sex. And, I also became aware that a lot of my peers were also having unprotected sex, and were just not knowledgeable. You said earlier, everyone should know, but I'm here to tell you, a lot of older people do not know. They did a campaign in New York, you can see up there, it says, "Age is not a condom", and most of you may have gotten a little card when you came in. And, they did that campaign to educate the older adult, because older adults think, because they're old, they don't need a condom. Well, I'm going to be honest with you, my generation, we used condoms to keep from getting pregnant, that was the main purpose, or to keep from getting syphilis or gonorrhea, okay? Herpes, wasn't even heard of, chlamydia, and all that other stuff was just nonexistent. And, the pill came along, hallelujah, we were free at last. Okay? We didn't have to worry about anything, because penicillin cured the gonorrhea or the syphilis, okay? So, we were good to go. But, now they got stuff penicillin they're scared of. It don't work. So, older adults needed to be educated, and I found there was nobody talking about it. I am a PK, a preacher's kid, so when I found out I was positive, I wasn't as most, a lot of people are devastated, angry, upset, or anything else. I had to accept responsibility for my actions. I had the, uh, right to say no, I had the right to close my leg, I had the right to insist to use a condom. I did none of the above. I knew this man from the time I was thirteen years old. We grew up in the same neighborhood, went to the same high school. I trusted him. Why, I need a condom? You who? You been married and your wife left you, I'm widowed, we okay. I didn't even think about it. But, some years later, I found out he got sick, and I asked the question, and he answered honestly, yes, I am HIV positive. And, I, well, you know what, you could have told me, because at the time, we had a relationship, we were both in our fifties. And, I said to him quite honestly, you know what? Pregnant would be worse than age at fifty-five. Ladies, you know what I'm talking about, okay? No woman wants to, I mean, I'm looking at you, no, by the time the kid get out of high school, I'm in my seventies, that ain't gonna work. So, I accepted, okay, I made a mistake, you made a mistake, you didn't know how to talk about it. And, at the time, I was still grieving for my husband, so we were both two depressed people leaning on each other. We didn't intend on having sex, it just happened. I couldn't sleep, so he used to stay with me, he'd stay in with his parents, right down the same block I lived on. He would hold me till I went to sleep, he'd get up and go home. And, that worked for a good little while, but it was summer, and it was hot, and I'm gonna tell the truth, okay? I, I was about, honestly, I was about fifty pounds smaller than I am now, because them HIV meds gave me a baby. You know, you talk about the belly? Mm-hmm. So, I thought I was cute, I really did. You know, I had on my little short shorts and little halter top, I was cute. And, he was curled up behind me, and we sleeping, and up popped the devil. Okay? We woke up, we were already busy. Well, honestly, I was not complaining. I had been married for eighteen years, my husband was an everyday man, I hadn't had any for a long time, so I was like, thank you, that's nice, okay? Can we do it again? See, you know, people don't always like to tell the truth. I'm gonna tell you the truth, okay? We have to tell the truth so people will understand. But, he had a secret, and so from then on, he tried to avoid having sex with me. I accused the man of being gay and all kinds of stuff. Like, wow, I could whistle down the street, somebody would come up here. But, eventually, he got sick, he had pneumonia. This is three years into the relationship. And, so, when I, you know, it's summertime, you got pneumonia, hello, something else going on here. And, he told me, yes, I'm positive. So, we remained friends, he asked me to marry him, and I was like, you know, you could have told me, but we can get past this, we're gonna still be friends. Well, little did I know, at the time, you know, I'm a PK, like I said, preacher's kid, so, at the time, I felt fine, and I prayed every morning and every night, thank you, Jesus, I escaped that bullet, okay? And, when I was fifty-seven years old, he died, the complications of AIDS. And, I'm still thanking God, because I'm still feeling fine. But, when I turned fifty-nine, I didn't feel so good. I'm a hyper little person, I was running around all the time, and all of a sudden, I had no energy. I couldn't walk to the back of this room without having to sit down, because I was tired. And, I knew something was wrong. So, I walked into a clinic and asked to be tested, and I tested positive. Well, they were afraid that I was going to go ballistic, you know, and they were like, well, wait a minute, we got a counselor, you need to talk to somebody. I don't need to talk to nobody, I'm okay. And, eventually, they believed me, and they let me go. And, I went home and I called my best friend, who lives in San Francisco, and I said, girlfriend, guess what? I got HIV. And, she said, well, you awful lot of diab out. And, I was, hey, you know what? You diabetic and didn't know it. You went to work one day and passed out on the job, they called an ambulance, you went to hospital for a week, you almost died. I walked in the clinic, got tested, and drove myself home. I think I'm in better shape than you are. I had to be real about it, you know, but I immediately went into treatment. I said, now what? They said, well, we did a rapid test, we're gonna draw some blood, we're gonna find your genotype, we're gonna do this. I'm, okay, let me get a dictionary, I gotta find out what all this stuff is about. I began to educate myself, and the more I learned, the more I realized there were a lot of people like me that didn't know. Within six months, I was asked to speak at the University of Maryland School of Pharmacy on HIV and aging. And, I was on a panel of six people. All of the persons on that panel had been living with HIV for at least ten or twenty years. They had aged into aging with HIV. I was the only one on the panel that actually contracted or was diagnosed as an older adult. And, so, we were asked to address the issues of why older adults are vulnerable, and that's what I did. The gentlemen on the panel were all homosexual, and they talked about their lives. And, the women were former drug addicts, and they talked about their lives. I was new, I didn't know what to talk about. So, they gave me a couple of questions, why are old people, I said, okay, I'm gonna answer these questions. Why are older adults vulnerable? First off, because of what we don't know, because what you don't know can kill you, okay? Second off, we're undereducated or uneducated about HIV. Doctors do not talk to older patients about HIV. Most people, first off, oh, my doctor's young enough to be my child, okay? So, they're not going to ask me some questions. I actually reprimanded a doctor. Yes, I did. Don't look at me like that, I did. He was a gynecologist who had never seen me, he asked a lot of questions before he examined me, he examined me, and he made some comments, and when he finished, I said, now I can reprimand you. You never asked if I was sexually active. My chart says I'm HIV positive. He said, well, you said you had a boyfriend. I said, that doesn't mean anything, I could have ten boyfriends, okay? I could be doing ten of them, or I could be doing none, but you, as the doctor, should have asked, am I sexually active? And, most older adults, the doctor does not ask that question. He assumes. Why? Because no one wants to say, I said earlier, and this happened to me yesterday, how many of you think your grandparents are sexually active? Not one? Dag, Renee? Renee should know that. Somebody, Suzanne, no? Do you think they could be? No. Okay. Alright, hello, you real, I got it. Well, let me tell you what they used to say when I was a kid, just because there's snow on the roof, don't mean ain't no fire in the furnace, alright? Understand, yes, they are sexually active. Your sexual appetite does not die with age, it don't get old and shrivel up, it don't not work, okay? I'm putting it like that, because this is what a lot of people think, including doctors, that it doesn't work anymore. I've had students ask me, well, why are some old people sexually active? Well, honey, you know what? We got time. We ain't got a job, we not working, we retired, we ain't got no little kids running around the house. We can get up and do it for breakfast, lunch, dinner, midnight snack, it's okay, we got time. Okay? Y'all ain't got time, see, y'all gotta go to work, you know, you gotta come home, you gotta feed the kids, you gotta get them in the bed, gotta wait till the house get quiet, you gotta shut the door, and you gotta be quiet, you know? We can scream and holler, carry on, don't matter, ain't nobody round, it's okay, okay? The reality of life, though. The other problem is that, in Baltimore where I live, we have a lot of high-rise senior buildings, and at the first of the year, all us old folk get a check. You know what I mean? We get social security, retirement, some kind of check. All of them get it around the first of the month, I don't know why, but they all get it the first of the month. And, if you go to these high-rise buildings, you will see all these young people, young men and women, out there, approaching the older adults. And, what do they say? Oh, the young lady may go up to him, hey daddy, you look gooood. You know, you are, let me come up and cook you some good food. And, he'll say, yes. And, she'll get in his apartment, and she'll cook him a good meal, and she'll give him a little special dessert. Alright, and if he don't function too well, she might give him a little Viagra to help him out. Hello? The old lady will be outside, a little young guy come up, oh mama, you look good, you know, you look too young to be living with all these old people, let me carry your bags for you. And, he'll get in her apartment, and he'll stroke her ego, and I hate to say this, but a lot of older people are very lonely, okay? The grandchildren call you when? Christmas, same one, Mother's Day, and their birthday, no, okay? They might call on your birthday, but they're gonna definitely call you on their birthday, they're looking for some money. So, you know, we want somebody to say, you look good. We want somebody to hold our hand, we want somebody to give us a hug. So, that young guy's in there telling that woman how beautiful she is, he's holding her hand, he's hugging her, and he giving her a little something special too, alright? And, that's all well and good, because when they get ready to leave, they're gonna say, well, mama, you know, I come see you more often if I had a bus pass, and she going down in the First National Bank, give him a couple of dollars, you know? And, the girl gonna say, daddy, I call you every day if I had some minutes on my phone, and he gonna give her a little few dollars. But, the middle of the month, our money get funny, because we pay our bills up front, and then they got the little extra change, and we ain't giving out no more money. So, they don't come around till the first of the next month. However, that old lady still feel frisky, because that young guy rocked her boat, and that old man still got some Viagra, you know? And, in most of the buildings in Baltimore, there are at least seven women for every man. So, what's he gonna do? Knock on the neighbor's door, and he might sleep with a different one every night of the week. And, if one infected person in that building, that virus can spread through that whole building. So, that's another reason that older adults are vulnerable. The doctor didn't ask them, they busy at home. And, then there are other things that they don't even think of as being risky behavior. I said one time that, you know, a lot of older adults, as you said earlier, whether they have HIV or not, or diabetic, and a lot of us have limited funds. Diabetes runs in families, so if you live in a house with two or three relatives, and you're all diabetic, and it's the end of the month, and you ain't got much money, and you only got two lancets to prick your finger, you gonna share them? Oh, that's sharing blood. Or, you may share an insulin needle, that's sharing blood, and you can get infected. They had one case in Baltimore, where a young man took his grandmother's insulin needle for his drugs, and put it back, and he was positive. She was diagnosed in her nineties. Okay? So, we don't think about the obvious thing, and this is why I bring these things up, to make people aware. And, I said this at, to a group of seniors about the diabetes and not sharing lancets and needles, and one lady up front said, ooh, I'm gonna go first from now on, and I'm like, no, miss, don't, don't share, that ain't the point, you know, you should not share. Uh, y'all keeping my time for me? Okay? So, they know I can talk, I just go on and on. Uh, it, you know, it's important to educate everyone, so, um, okay, it's important to educate everyone. When I speak, I say to each person and to all of you here, I want you to feel free to share what I've said to you, to tell my story, to your friends and family. If you have not been tested, ask someone to go with you to get tested, and get, so, because knowledge is power. Too many people don't know their status, and that's the first step. The gentleman before me have both said, get tested, get tested, get tested. Once you know your status, then you can take better care of yourself, and better care of those that you love, alright? Renee, you know I'm gonna do it. Okay? I'm a silly person, but I love jokes. Renee's heard it a million times, but it's still funny. So, I'm gonna tell my favorite old folk joke. For those of you that have heard it, just laugh anyway, okay? These are two senior citizens who go to a senior center every day. He's ninety years old, she's in her late eighties, but they like each other, and they flirt with each other. And, eventually, he asks her out on a date. Well, he's a real gentleman, he picks her up on time, he brings her flowers, he holds the door, he takes her to the restaurant and holds her chair, they have a wonderful meal together, and after dinner, he invites her back to his apartment. And- And after dinner, he invites her back to his apartment, and she goes. And as nature takes its course, they end up in the bed together, doing what folks do in the bed together. And when it was all over, they both lay back contemplating what had just happened. And he thought, if I'd known she was a virgin, I'd have been more gentle. And she thought, if I'd known he could still do it, I'd have taken off my pantyhose. Now, I want you to know, pantyhose is not a good barrier of protection, you must use a condom. Thank you. Do we have any questions? Don't hesitate, because I'm going back to Baltimore, you can't ask me tomorrow. Okay? Yes, sir. Huh? Oh, yes, that's right, you must wait for the mic.
Yeah, I can't tell. Okay, so what do you tell old people when they ask you about your HIV status, and how you encourage them to go get tested? Because in my experience, I always get, honey, I just trust the Lord.
Okay. I get that too. But, I'm gonna tell you, I speak at a lot of senior centers, what I do is take a tester with me, because I find when I finish talking, they will get tested, if the tester is there. If they have to go somewhere, they may not do it. And I will tell you this, Renee, because you know I've had this battle in my own church. My baby brother is my bishop, but of course, I'm 11 years older than him, and he had some issues with how I got infected, it was his problem, not mine. But I stayed in his faith, you know, the Lord say, you stay right here and let people know what you're doing. And so, last year, year before last, I said, I'm gonna talk on World AIDS Day. I didn't ask, I just told him. It came on a Sunday, so he said, okay, you can have five minutes. I can say a lot in five minutes, and I did. This year, well, last year, some of the health ministry people asked me to speak again. So I said, can I bring a tester in? They said, yes. So we brought a tester to the church. And when I finished speaking, and Renee will love my speech, I took it from one of his sermons on mercy. I said, where is the mercy? All right? Where is the mercy for the HIV-infected person? But I ain't going there now, okay? But, I had a tester come in, and so as I stood behind the podium with the mic in my hand, and my brother sat on the side, I said, bro, we got a tester here, and I know as the leader, you will lead. You gonna be the first in the line, aren't you? Now, of course, he couldn't say no, so he did. He and his wife were the first to get tested. And there were some members that said to me afterward that had he not gone first, they would not have gotten tested. I'm proud to say that the tester ran out of test kits, or almost ran out of test kits after the first service, or he left to get some more. And after the second service, people were tired of waiting, so he came back another Sunday. And on two Sundays, we tested 25 people in our church on Sunday. So, does that tell you? So, to get to older people, I suggest you get somebody like me to come in and talk to them, because they don't want to hear what a young person has to say. They need to have a peer, and you take a tester with you.
I must thank you for an excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I was just a bit concerned about the scenario you painted of the high-rise and the first of the month, and whatever goes on over there. And this is not a question, it's more of what can be done about it, do you think? Because that's a situation that really is fueling whatever we have.
Yeah. Education. When I was first diagnosed, and I joined a support group in Baltimore, my first statement was, I want to go to every senior building in the city except the one my mama live in, okay? And talk to the seniors. I run really talk to my mama, okay? You know, God does things that in His time. And I actually was asked by my congressman to speak at a building that he couldn't go to, and I said, yes, before I asked where the building was, and it was my mama's building. So, I went there, I did. God made a way that she was out of town at the time, so that was even better. But, yes, if you take the time to approach these buildings and talk to people, and I will tell you, not only do I go in with a tester, I go in with condoms, I set up a table, and one guy took so many condoms, I had to get him a bag, okay? But if you go into the buildings and you speak to the people there, if you agree to supply condoms, because a lot of them are not going to the store to ask. So if you say, the health department can bring you condoms once a month, and we'll send a tester once a month to this building, and you can get tested, that would help solve the problem, or at least diminish the problem. And I'll say in Baltimore, Renee, this is the one good thing that I've heard, well, it's good and bad. The newly infected, the number of newly infected people in Baltimore actually decreased by 20%. That is wonderful. However, 23% of all of the newly infected people were over the age of 50. That's not good. Older adults are becoming the largest population, because people are aging, and people that have been positive for 10, 20, 30 years are now in their 50s and 60s and 70s, and older people are getting infected. So, the federal government has actually said, I think by, what is it, next year? That over 50% of everyone that is living with HIV or AIDS will be over 50. So we need to do a lot of outreach to the older adults, okay? We good?
I call on her all the time, I know she has great information, and she's just real about her information. Let's give all of our speakers a round of applause for coming and sharing. Do just want to thank those who helped make today come to fruition, and thanking the Faith Community Partnership, Beautiful Gate is here, the staff and volunteers, Esquire Ramona Foman for helping to allow us to have this venue, and Lindsay's catering. So when we finish today, there's some wonderful sandwiches that are outside of this auditorium, so please go ahead and take those on your way back for many to work. Just want to share just a couple of quick announcements as we close out. Well, all the ladies, all the queens, would you raise your hand? Let me see all the ladies. All righty. I want to give you a personal invitation to invite you to the 10th Annual Saving Our Sisters Conference. It's in recognition of National Women and Girls HIV/AIDS Awareness Day. You don't want to miss this grand celebration, it's gonna be on Saturday, March the 6th, 7th, I'm sorry, that should be the 7th, March the 7th. To register, we have an online vehicle, we want you to use Eventbrite. And all of this week, because we just rolled out the registration, all this week has been a discount for the tickets, and it closes tonight at 11:59, so you want to make sure that you register. We've always provided superb speakers and presenters, and this year is no different. We have First Lady Carla Markell, we have Dr. Pernestas Seal, we have Secretary Rita Langgraf, Reverend Cleo Townsend, Dr. Carol Belton, Danae Jacobs, Reverend Christina Dennis, Dr. Doris Griffin, women and girls living with HIV and AIDS, and just so many other speakers. You don't want to miss this wonderful celebration. Each year, we also have a special celebrity guest, and it's a surprise for now, but she will join the list of our great celebrities who have joined us in the past with Judge Glenda Hatchett, our actresses, Rolanda Watts, and Cassie Davis. So that surprise, we don't want you not to get your tickets, so register today for your discount, and we will be sharing that information next week. Get tested. Get tested. Know your status. Know your status. Encourage friends and family to get tested. Encourage friends and family to get tested. We can stop HIV. We received great information and update from Dr. Luda, we understand better how the medication works, we know the personal stories of someone living with HIV and AIDS. Don't let this information just stay in this room, take it, and let us continue our fight with HIV and AIDS. Thank you so much for joining us, God bless you, and be safe.